Someone almost passe now.
I hope so.
You forget what country we're in.
Yeah, you're right. You're so right. You put the commercial repeat show up. We did a mock-up board here with the beach.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that is cool. You know, you gotta laugh, right? Gotta laugh at ourselves sometimes.
Okay, I guess we can get started at 7 o'clock. Welcome me to the March 5th Land Board meeting. Would you join in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The board is brand new too.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Kishani.
Here.
Mr. Giardina.
Here.
Mr. Cosell.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Om Dhi. I believe he's on floor. I saw something.
Yeah.
Right this way. Yeah.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mr. Tussell.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Okay, we have four items on the agenda this evening. And I guess we can get started with the first one. Go ahead.
375 West the Road Pole Barn, located 375 West the Road. Roger.
Oh. Has it awesome?
Awesome, okay. Very good. And there Betty is requesting final site plan approval associated with construction of a 20 by 30 pole barn with an 8 by 30 side cover overhang and associated with construction of a 20... I'm sorry. A 3.85 acre parcel located on District 1, Single Family Residential District under the code Towne Webster.
Yes, sir. What's your name and address?
My name is Ross Ballot, AWWE. The address is 375 West the Road, West New York.
Okay, and you're proposing the pole barn?
Yes.
I talked to Josh about it. I know they took your application, but there's no dimensions where this is from the lot line. I have no idea how far you are from the property line on the drawing. I mean, you can see where you sketched it in, which is fine. And the other thing I'm picking up is the gray drops there. It looks like on your topo map here, it looks like the gray drops about 6 feet in that area?
Probably drops, Chairman, probably drops around 20 feet, but the pole barn would not go down to that level. Unless the plan shows that way.
Well, see, this is what I'm getting at. See where you're showing the pole barn on the drawing? It's at 327. 327, and it goes down to 333. So there's quite a drop there. So my question is, how are you going to... Are you gonna dig that out? Are you gonna fill it in? Or how are you gonna... What are you doing to put the building ahead? In other words, it's not a flat piece of ground.
Where the pole barn was proposed to go, it is. You are correct.
Here's the microphone.
Oh, it's a mic bar?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You can sing if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, you are correct. The pole barn, it will be situated on a flat ground and probably a few feet beyond the pole barn in back of the pole barn, which has no entrance or exit, of course. It probably drops down. So with that, is that a concern because it drops down? We need to fill that in a certain distance from the back of the...
Well, the inspector, you know, once the building inspector, you go to get your permits instead of... The building inspector's gonna come. But I think it should be known how this is gonna set on a slope. It's what the drawing shows from one point to the opposite corner. There's a six-foot drop. See what I'm saying? It's not flat. So you can't put the building... So either you have to put a lot of filler, or excavate, or put it underground or something. I don't know what you're doing with it.
So the intent of Mr. Chairman was to grade down, pull from the high to the low, to level it so that... I was shown, I thought it was more like a six-foot. So we take three, so we go in, move it over, it'll be flat that way. What my dad is talking about, that larger drop is several feet beyond the back of that structure where it really drops off significantly and quickly.
Well, let me ask you about this site plan. So I see it's dated 2011. Is this the site plan that was put together for when the house was proposed?
Yeah, the original site plan, I think, was for the house, yes.
Okay. And right now, it doesn't show the existing grading on the property? This was the grading that existed at the time when the drawing was prepared in 2011?
Correct, yes. There's a lot of difference there, but...
Okay, so that's counterpoint, is that the site plan doesn't show the characteristics of the parcel. It doesn't show any flat area. It doesn't show what you're planning to do for the grading and so forth for this building. It doesn't show what exists on the site. That's what we need to see, is what exists on the site. What you propose to do for grading the site, to put in this building.
Okay.
Because we... They don't have in our mind what it looks like now.
Right.
There isn't any way to tell from this building.
So I guess, so your recommendation, we go back to the engineer who actually did this plan, because we were with the... Not the planning board. When we appeared before the zoning board, it was approved at the zoning board for a certain size, but then we needed it a little bit bigger. So I guess, so your suggestion is we go back and have the engineer actually do all the requirements that you were asking us here.
Right. For the zoning board, you had adequate information. Alls they wanna know is how far are you from the side and so on and so forth. I don't have a drawing here that shows it. Shows what the distance is.
Understood.
You know what I mean? So you have to have that. And you're getting a little lax with it. You really should have the materials you're gonna show. Show a sample, the color, whatever, the type of material you're using. Something like that. A little piece of something or a picture of it at least, you know, what this building is going to look like. Alls I've got is a sketch of a building that looks like, I don't know, maybe you guys drew it yourself or something. I don't know who drew it, but it's not a good representation of what the pole barn will ultimately be, I'm sure.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. We will take note of that, and we'll make sure we have all of that information presented to the board.
Now, we can do two things. I mean, if the board is okay, wanting to do a preliminary, and you come back for final, I grant you just held off. You got everything together, and then we can do a preliminary final the same way. Is that all right?
That'll be fine, sir.
Okay?
Fine, thank you.
Still just one more tag. All right, let's do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So I'll note everything down. Catherine will put it out. And we'll send you the note.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry for the holdup. Well, I don't know how long to... When would you want to come back in?
Soon as, I guess, as soon as we can, you know, we'll go to the gentleman that did the plan probably tomorrow. So when is the next meeting?
The next meeting would be the 19th.
Yeah, I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can come back at that point, sir. We know who the builder's gonna be, and we know what material is. We just listen.
Yeah, that's why I just...
It was just ignorance on our part. And certainly, certainly did not want to waste your time.
You don't build them every day, I understand. It's not ignorance, it's just lack of some of the information.
Okay.
Should've had that talk.
Let me show we... Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Excellent, Phil.
So we want to make a motion here to table this 375 West the Road Pole Barn until April 19th. So... 19.
19.
So Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Giardina.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Bye.
Mr. Malta. Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
I missed them.
Okay, the next one. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
Live storage site plan modification located 109922 Ridge Road, Webster Ridge Road LLC. Requesting a site plan modification of a previously approved site plan to allow the relocation of the storage building G from the west side of the property to the east side of the property on a 5.93 acre parcel located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under the code Towne Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members. I'm Dave Cox with Hashwell Associates. Gonna be real quick here. So the previous design, Building G, was down here in this corner here. It's a 900 square foot building. It's one of the smallest buildings on the site. So we just wanna relocate it from this portion here to the opposite side of the site and put it here. Just works out a little bit better for layout and grading, for reasons. And that's pretty much it.
It's situated so it just squeezes in the 20-foot section area?
Correct. Yeah. Good thing it's a 900 square foot building.
Dylan, how come you're moving it?
It just works a little better for grading. This is over here by the pond. And you'd have to do a little more fill over in that area, so put it there.
Does that, that won't block any traffic going back? Plus, will it? Go one edge to the other, probably?
Nope, there's no blocking of any traffic.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Eric, you okay? Brad, me?
Yep.
You guys, all right? Yeah, I have to do it. Secret, I didn't do it. Yes, just a lap over from here. All right. Somebody wanna make a motion for it? Yeah, it's just a... And just a site plan modification. Again, though, this, I should announce, this is a public hearing for this project. If there is anyone wishing to... Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Brewster's again.
Oh, yeah, sure, why not?
We've got something that changed from last year on this, and I need to address it. Maybe just between him. I know, I'm leaving the pot, right?
I don't know, Brewster, come on, come on.
Last year, you see, are you gonna start the lines coming in here? I have, last year, we...
Use the microphone. We can hear what you're saying. Give us your name and address.
I'm trying to explain to him what I'm looking at.
Give us your name and address first, and then we'll start.
Mary Amato, Piece of the Rock, which is Brewster's Ice Cream, with a property of your own. When we were here last year, we talked about putting a cut through that they were gonna just do the apron and move into our back area so that we would have the circular drive for fire trucks or anything else needing to go through. And I have those plans with me. When this came out, all of a sudden, our dotted lines are gone, and I'm looking at solid lines. So, what's up? Here.
This dotted line's still here.
Well, this is what I had last year. This is what came up. You can see the turn-in is gone.
There's some data in the line. It says proposed driveway location.
But it's where it's supposed to come back into our parking lot. And I gotta pull up Exhibit C and A on these papers that came up. I'm just trying to cover my bases so they don't say, well, it wasn't here then, and now we don't have to do it.
It's in the, here's the old plan. So you can see those...
Right, the ones that I have, see how they were gonna pave, like five, six feet coming in.
Oh, yeah, that's still here.
Okay, that's not here. I'm looking at a solid line now, and I'm like, is there any defense up, what's going on? So we're just trying to cover my bases.
Yeah, it's the same as it was. So, yeah, that's the intent, keep that same.
So there will still be the pass-through so we can circular around?
Right.
Okay.
So are you saying it is or is not showing in your drawing today?
It's the same as it was previously.
It is, or...
Yeah, no change.
So it is that there?
But it's the drawing, and that section of the drawing is modified by where it was last April, which is why I came in.
Okay, but does it satisfy your needs, the way it's supposed to?
If it's on record that he says, yes, it's still there, and then I can come back on that, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Well, I guess the actual question you wanna ask is that the drawing from last year and the new drawings dated June 2021 shows the proposed reciprocal access easement for 1041 Ridge Road. So one of the conditions of approval of the parcel is that easement should've been filed, until the question was...
It is. I have all the final...
So if that easement is filed, then that actually...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Someone make a motion to this? All right, I'll make a motion that we grant a modification to the Webster Golf Tee self-storage. And let's make it simple. Relocating, I don't know what that building number is.
Building G.
Building G to its new location is noted in the drawings.
That works.
These suffice, but...
Second.
That's a motion. Second.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Giardina.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Hey, you're all set.
Thanks, Grandma.
How's that coming? Pretty good?
Yeah.
Yeah, does it look like elevator towers going in there? Or going up and down the site?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Moving along.
Yeah.
Free nature preserve park on located 1775 Ridge Road. Emma Oakes from Costage Engineering on behalf of Genesee Land Trust, Inc. Requesting preliminary final site plan approval associated with construction of a six-space gravel parking lot very deserved to bring it natural preserve on a 71 acre parcel located in a large lot, single-family residential district under the code Towne Webster.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Emma Oakes, past ditch. I'm a project manager and landscape architect representing Genesee Land Trust. Like you just mentioned, we've come together with a plan to add a six-space gravel parking lot with an associated curb cut onto Route 404 Ridge Road. We are currently pursuing New York State DOT permits for said curb cut. We received your PRC comments from the town. I'd be happy to walk through those if you'd like, or hear any comments that you all have.
Well, let's see. What I got, I'm proposing, what? Parking in there now?
Yeah.
The cars have been parking on the road?
On the shoulder, yes.
There's some issues with that.
Yeah, same here.
Is this the only access to the park?
Yes, as I'm aware, yes.
The only big question, I don't know why, I mean, if you have a reason, but what's, why so much asphalt out in front of the road for the entrance?
So, yes, so that's a great question. So originally, we had a smaller curb cut than we were proposing, more of a kind of a residential-sized curb cut with a 15 to 16-foot radius. However, the New York State DOT is classifying this curb cut as commercial because it is a public access to a public park. So technically, we're supposed to be meeting that 33-foot radius on the curb cut, which makes it significantly larger.
So you're parking, you got how many yards? Six?
Six, yeah.
Six parking spaces in there, right?
Yeah.
Is, I'm just curious, is this a parcel that a few years ago was in? They were going to put an array of solar panels and stuff? Is this the same piece?
I'm not sure. I wasn't involved back then. But I do know back in December of 2011 is when the parcel transferred to the Genesee Land Trust. I'm not sure if the land trust has been...
I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What's that?
Walking range or something in this parcel.
Walking range, I don't know. I was thinking, you remember a few years back when we had that solar recommitment?
Yeah, I don't know your type.
You know what I'm talking about?
It's in that general letter.
It is, and I'm wondering if it's the same parcel.
I think it was further back off the road than this is.
Well, yeah. Well, that was, that was large. That was acreage coverage of those panels there. There's how many acres do you have?
71.
71 acres? That might've been the same piece. All right, neither here... I have an issues with it. How about sign it? You're putting signs on the road, or... I see you got one sign, bring it...
That's part of this plan. That is actually a picture of an existing sign that's already on the parcel. One of the comments we received from the PRC was that we have some sort of sign indicating the hours of operation for the park, from dawn to dusk. And that's presently out there. I just included that so you could see.
Okay, is there a... Let's see, uh, DC engineer, highway. Any ability to park along the street? Do you all parking signs in the road?
No.
What do you do? Only six parking spaces. There's no buildings there. If you go back to when you were a kid, that might've been a good place to go park in there. If we wanted it that way.
Sure.
How do you prevent that?
Well, so I...
Kids pulling in there, just parking, you know?
Right.
There's a little deer or whatever.
Yeah, that's a great question. I know that the preserve has kind of public rules of, you know, how to operate in the park and what to do and what not to do. You know, there's no hunting back there. They're kind of publicly known rules, but I'm not sure in terms of access. The access...
I wonder if maybe it'd be a good idea to put in a resolution that they, just so that, you know, keep getting police calls by neighbors if kids are there, that the park closes at whatever time, 10 o'clock at night? No admittance after 10 o'clock, some sort of a... Something to put some teeth in so nobody can go park there.
Okay. So are you talking about, like a gate or...
Open down to the dusk. That doesn't say anything, no. Doesn't say you can't go park there at night, you know? Should have a specific time that you...
Okay.
I think anyways, I don't...
So just a time listed on the sign? You thinking?
I don't know.
Except from here.
The parks usually close at 10 o'clock at night? Right?
Or 11.
Or dusk. Dusk, but why's it gotta be open any later than that? There's no light, there's no nothing there, so dusk is... Yeah, but that's when kids come out, right? I know, and I know. So it'd be a good idea just to lock it up so they don't come out. True.
Nine in the morning to nine at night.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, you guys, I'm just tossing it out there. What do we think?
The Genesee Land Trust has several properties around Monroe County, and this is their typical sign that's located at all of them. Not to say that they couldn't change that for this particular parking Webster if you guys felt the need, but they have a precedent at other locations, is all I'm saying, for using the sign. Haven't had any issues in that regard.
I think just because there are neighbors nearby and so on and so forth, I think it should be assigned there. And I'd say 10 o'clock at night, no admittance after 10 p.m. This way, if somebody's there, the police can come and say, you're out.
Sure.
Otherwise, what are they gonna do? Come and say, you don't think you're supposed to be here? You know what I mean?
Sure. So actually putting a time on the sign?
Yeah, yeah, something just more positive, more fun. Um, what else? Anything else we should be thinking here? Just six parking spaces. You guys all right with that?
Yeah.
Emma, could you just describe to the board?
What's that?
I'm just asking Emma to describe to the board where they're at with the curb cut approval of New York State DOT.
Yeah, so we are prepared to submit tomorrow morning for that. We actually just got all of our materials and sign forms together from the client, so that's going out tomorrow morning.
So what you can do then is just give a preliminary?
That's fine.
See, you're gonna do that? Once you got your permits from the state, then back and you will file one?
Yep, understood.
All right?
Yeah.
That's, that's accurate, right?
Yeah.
All right. All right, you gonna do a sticker? Yeah, we should do a sticker on this.
Okay.
Up the curb. Up the curb. Oh, yeah, this is a public hearing. It's news anyway. You guys in the back corner?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right.
If we put another time underneath that new sign?
What's it called? Marquee? What's that?
If we put another sign near your time? Put it to parking on a driveway.
Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead.
This is a non-residential apartment. It's actually a park that I wanted to do. Towne Webster Planning Board considered request by applicant Emma Oakes of Costage Engineering on behalf of the Genesee Valley Land Trust to construct a six-phase, 2,100 plus or minus quarter-foot parking area located at 1775 Ridge Road. Parcel having SBL number 081.01-1-23.1. Planning Board classifies proposed action as a type 2 action under Section 617.5C9 of State Environmental法规 and regulations, and that is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Giardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion for the approval of the project? Preliminary?
So we can, I'll make a motion here for the Grand Natural Preserve located at 1775 Ridge Road to a preliminary approval for a six-phase parking lot area to serve the Grand Nature Preserve, a gravel parking lot. And there's also to be a sign installed which says what time the park closes. Do we have to do all this stuff on the thing here, Tony?
Subject, make it subject to PRC comments.
Subject to PRC comments. All improvements shall be constructed according to specification.
No, that's more for, I'll, just, you just have to cover the PRC comments and the issue of the sign. I think that was all we had, wasn't it?
Okay, all right.
That's, that's all. I'll second that.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
Mr. Gashani?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you all.
Hey, you're outside. Um, just got your permit from the state, put that in. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we, we can group that up, people's own, we can, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Northeast area for Technology Industrial Park located seventeen seventy-five Claymore Road. Advocate Rose Bros. Inc. has requested the schedule plan review. Our proposed industrial park to accommodate large industrial buildings on a hundred acre of land assisting of parcels under code town west.
Good evening, Board members. David Cox with Pastoral Associates, uh, civil engineer for the project. So, as described, the land is located off Basket Road. Uh, it's about a hundred acres. Um, it's, here's T-Bore Road that comes in. Um, so it's kinda in the back here, it's all industrial zone land. Over here to the south is Route one oh four. So, uh, Keith Burrows, the owner of the property, has been getting some interest over the, over the year or two, uh, for different types of industrial uses. Uh, we've seen, just in my profession, we've seen kind of an optick and, and some industrial type stuff, and also some very, uh, you know, large users, if you will. Uh, that there's just, there's not a lot of, you know, large industrial land left, you know? Where it's eighty plus acres. Um, it's close to a, you know, major thoroughfare like one oh four. Um, so, the, it's a pretty, a pretty unique property. It also has access to rail, uh, there's a rail service right along one oh four, uh, which some industrial users are, are very interested in. Uh, but, uh, just to, so I'm working on, our Pastoral Associates actually has two projects, um, in different parts of the New York that are million square feet, uh, industrial projects. So, um, you know, we didn't really see that too much, you know, five years ago or ten years ago. So, there has been a kind of a shift more towards that. Um, so, but a lot of these users, when they're looking for a site, they are ready to go, and they wanna be in the ground and starting construction within four months usually, or something like that. Um, so a lot of those, a lot of that interest, um, that, you know, we couldn't, uh, deliver that type of timeline on this project. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Burrows has said, you know, what can we do to try to compress that timeframe, uh, so that we're more shuttle-ready, uh, when, you know, when the next user comes along? So, uh, what we're planning to do here is, you know, as long as we get some good feedback and, and the town thinks it's a, it's a good thing, um, we would be looking to get preliminary overall approval to kinda set our seeker limits, our seeker guidelines. You know, how much square footage would this property support? How much, um, impervious surface? And we can, you know, do a traffic study, sanitary sewer calculations, capacities, um, studies, waters, water calculations, and really kinda hammer out all of those, um, seeker issues, so we know what they are. And then if there's a preliminary approval, then when a user comes forward, uh, we can just say, hey, this user wants three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, a million, whatever it is, it, that fits within the seeker limits, you know? That we're not above those seeker thresholds, so that we could go right to final design with that user specifically. Um, so really compressing that, that schedule down and would really allow, um, more opportunity for users uh, to be interested in this site if we could compress that down. Um, so, there is no current user, um, on the books right now, uh, but we're just trying to get this, get the property to a, a, a closer time period where it could be more developable and more appetizing. So what we've proposed here is a large million square foot building, kind of in the center, um, which there has been interest in the past for that size building. Uh, and then some, a couple other buildings, uh, in a hundred fifty to three hundred thousand square foot range, kinda put around there. Um, so, the, you know, if we move forward with the project and it gets built, it could look a lot different under final, you know, instead of a million square feet, maybe you have a couple three hundred thousand square foot buildings or, or vice versa, because we don't really know what type of, um, users will, will finally end up there. Uh, but we just wanna move forward with, um, getting closer to that and looking at all those, all those seeker components. So the good thing is that, uh, one oh four is right here, so it's a relatively short travel distance. You know, if they were a, you know, a traffic generating user that had a lot of jobs or something like that, um, it is good that it is a relatively short distance off of one oh four to T-Bore Road, so that, you know, traffic is not traversing through, you know, residential neighborhoods or something like that. It's a, it's a very short industrial strip, uh, for Basket Road. So that's really good for, for traffic. The one oh four already has, you know, on ramps, off ramps, so, uh, it's already set up for higher volume. Obviously, we would, when we do our traffic study, we'll look at all those, you know, and see if there's any mitigation that would be required, uh, any turn lanes or anything like that, or any signal modifications. Um, we would analyze and look at all those different scenarios. Uh, the site kind of flows towards the northwest, so north is towards me. West is the top of the page here. So drainage kind of flows towards this area, so our major stormwater pond we've, uh, uh, put down here, we propose down here, and there is a, a creek that kinda runs through these backyards. That's where the drainage goes now, so we would continue that same, uh, drainage pattern. Uh, there already is water on T-Bore Road and sanitary sewer on T-Bore Road that we could access, as well as on Basket Road, there's water and sanitary. We would probably be making connections to both for water and sanitary. Yeah, so we really wanted to, you know, before I go and spend a bunch of Mr. Burrows' money, we wanted to, you know, go before the town, get town staff comments and the planning board comments, just to feel, you know, is this a, you know, something that is worth pursuing and, and further design? Um, that's the feedback we're looking for.
Uh, this one, this one's at the PRC, uh, being looked at, so. I question the road going in, is, why does that gotta be a dedicated road? So T-Bore is, but your road, T-Bore is a road going to other properties. This, making this a dedicated road just goes into your property, why can't that be just private traffic?
So it, it, it could. Um, so, the reason we don't really know yet is that it really debates, is dependent on users. So if you have a major user like this, that road doesn't need to be dedicated. If we end up having a bunch of smaller users, maybe a bunch of hundred thousand square foot, uh, buildings, that they wanna purchase the property, so they need to be individual lots, what, you know, without it being dedicated, you really, you have to do flag lots and you're pretty much, you can only have four lots with a flag. So, uh, if it becomes a bunch of smaller users, you really would need a dedicated road uh, to be able to have more than four lots. So that's where it's, that, that part's a little bit influx of, um, what would be the best use based on the users. But, but to your point, it, it could be just a private road, or it might need to be a dedicated road based on the number of lots.
And another, another question, something to look at anyways, is instead of a cul-de-sac, the square footage, what is this cul-de-sac, one twenty, one twenty-four, I believe?
Yeah, it's pretty big.
If that was eliminated, could that thing just portion across and carry it over to T-Bore? So it loops around as opposed to a, probably a drive, just, uh, I mean, dedicated road just going down to a cul-de-sac, you know?
Yeah.
Loop it, maybe you have to change your pond there?
Right. So that is also- Uh, an option as well, if we need to go down the dedicated, uh, route, that is certainly an option to loop it through. Um, but as I've mentioned, a lot, it's gonna be, that'll probably have to be more figured out at the final design opposed to preliminary design, just 'cause, based on users.
How many parking spaces proposing right now?
So right now, uh, it's over, it's over, I think it's around eighteen hundred per, eighteen hundred to two thousand. Um, and that is also largely driven on users. So, uh, what we're seeing a lot of is either warehousing, cross-dock, or manufacturing. Those are the three main industrial uses we're seeing right now. Um, so if it's warehousing, it's very, very little parking. Uh, mostly just some trucks. If it's cross-dock, it's higher truck volume, and once again, very few parking. But on the manufacturing side, that's when you see a lot more parking spaces needed. So some of the, you know, some of the users, manufacturing users up around a million square feet, you know, they can be looking at eighteen hundred parking spaces.
Well, actually, they're just looking for a direction. In my opinion, I think it's a good project, I mean, it's, it's all industrial, right?
Yeah, it's all industrial zone.
No stories, it's not a commercial type development, it's zone for industrial, it's, I don't have an issue with the, with the overall project, I just, I know you got a long way to go to, you know, tweak it and-
For sure.
Twist it, but, um, I don't know, how about you guys, anything?
There's a few things that caught my attention. You know? Start with, I was looking at the short form media, and I noticed that you, um, modified a couple of the answers that are self-popular by the D E C software.
Yep.
And, looking at the D E C maps, I understand that there's some comments that came in for a swift reproperty. One of the things that you said wasn't on the site is wetlands. Yeah, it clearly shows that there are wetlands on the property. There's a stream on the property. That stream has a hundred year flood flowing along the stream. And so I'm wondering why these items were changed on the seeker form, to say that they weren't there on the clearly there.
So the, um, there is a wetland on the property that, uh, Mr. Burrows is actually going through the process with the Army Corps to have that filled in, and he's gonna, uh, buy wetland from the wetland bank. So, that's actually in the process right now, he's already made the application. Uh, so we're hoping by the time we get to preliminary, that that will already be, uh, there will, will be no wetlands, because it'll be able to be filled and those wetlands will be purchased off-site. So that's why I, uh, checked that. So the, the plan is, when we move forward with this property, it will be clear of any wetlands.
About the hundred year flood on the stream?
So I believe that that is, that, that creek is off the, off the property.
The edge, the edge of the mapped area really just kisses that property, right?
Yeah.
And also in the north, you have the ranch that, it's in the southeast corner, so the flood plain comes up more in the parcel. Those parcels in the southeast corner, when I look at the tax maps, because it's kinda hard to see on the drawing that you had, there is two lots that are flag parcels that come off the under-table land. How do you propose to, are you re-subdiving those parcels to eliminate those flags?
Yeah.
And those parcels, now they have no access to a road. How are those parcels gonna have access to these developments?
Yeah, so right now, these, these parcels are flag lots, so they do have a, a flag to T-Bore Road versus a dedicated road, so they do have access. Uh, but, like I was saying, based on the users, uh, those lots might be shifted around, subdivided.
No, I, I understand that, but if you eliminate the flag, then those two parcels along one oh four don't have any access.
Oh, they would still, they would still have a flag, it just might be a slightly different configuration.
It would run the flag through this, though.
Yeah, unless, unless as proposed, we were proposing to extend T-Bore Road, so this would be dedicated road, and then they would have direct access, and it wouldn't need a flag if we extended the dedication of T-Bore Road.
So another thing to be aware of in this area is that parcels that's on the corner of, it's the northeast corner of Basket Road and one oh four, that's in the agricultural district. The parcel that's immediately adjacent to your property line also appears to be in the agricultural district. So, while the site itself is out, it is adjacent to, I don't know, five, eight, district of, of number six.
Yeah, and we'll submit a next district, uh, form with our preliminary application.
You know, there's also some things on the seeker form that says that this is in a special check zone, special overland district, and that, but it doesn't specifically what that is. Do you know what the overland district is?
I do not, what call is up there?
Okay. Right now, you don't show any kind of truck bays or so sort of on the, on the buildings, but this again, it's concept, so this whole layout with the, the parking lots, I mean, could be totally different by the time it comes in.
Yeah, it could be totally different.
The building is, you know, hundred truck bays down the road.
Yeah, so these are, I mean, it's hard to, so because of a hundred acre sites, we had to zoom out so much, uh, but, there is, like, around these, these buildings, these are truck bays. So those are over, would be overhead doors for truck bays. And these, and kind of in the fronts of the buildings was the, uh, standard vehicle parking. Just, it's hard at such a large scale, it-
Yeah, it's hard, it's faded and it's hard. And it doesn't, it's not that clear of, or else things are, how tragic and true to move on the site was.
Yeah, let's see, anybody else any thoughts on this?
Pretty large project, that was.
The east side of the property, is that residential, five hundred?
Yes. It's the L L zoning district.
Doesn't, T-Bore, right now, goes down the stubs. Seems to me when that was, many years ago, it was storage places where that was Thurston, that was getting cleared in. That was to eventually connect over into Ontario, into the base property over there, I believe, wasn't it?
I am not sure.
I'm not sure what the original-
If you go right to the end of T-Bore, there's a straight stretch through there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think way back when, that was a possibility to connect over to, uh, to Dean Parkway or wherever it is, or that. Yeah. Yeah, nothing to do with today, but I mean, it's just, you know? So what, what else can we give you here? The idea, I think it's a good idea, just to, you've got some homework, guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, I would definitely, I mean, in your process, as you're going along, I think, as opposed to that dead end with stub or cul-de-sac, trying to connect through and work your plan another way or something, you know, I don't know.
What should also work in thinking, this is, some of those parcels along County Line Road are all large lot. Doesn't really show on here. I know Catlet's gonna come in and I'll put in all sorts of landscaping along there, the screen and parcels and things. Now's the time to start planning for that, for it.
Yeah.
Just don't use located. Because right now, it just kinda shows the parking, it shows pavement essentially right up to the edge of the property. We have all the residential buffers that have to be taken.
Yeah, we can, we can push that, push that off and make sure that there's a nice, uh, landscape screening buffer there.
Yeah, it's just something between the minds. It will be assets, it's gonna want to be put in anyways.
Yep.
Probably another thing to look at is, is based on a number of vehicles, parking spaces. Oh, we should do a traffic study on it, too.
Absolutely.
And that, uh, what else, did we think of anything else that you needed to have now, to move, you know, to?
We're gonna have to give feedback, is Basket Road the county road?
What?
Is Basket a county road?
It is, yeah, so a referral was sent to them, and we're really in.
I have a lot to comment on, a little on the two.
Yeah, so for the traffic study, we'll need to coordinate with, uh, County DOT and New York State DOT, uh, because we, you know, the majority of traffic is coming off of Route one oh four, so, um, they're gonna both have input.
So what's, okay, what do we, we should condense this to a few items anyways that we wanna look at. We wanna make sure they're in there. My suggestion again is that road connecting over to T-Bore, you know, make a loop out of the project, right through the project. You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
That should be one, what else? Uh, Derek, what was that you mentioned before about the? Well, they're, they're, they're working on that, the D E C, you're working on getting permits to swap land and stuff.
Get my lands and really a workable resolution for those flag lots. We don't wanna wind up having something developed here that all of a sudden those two parcels don't have access.
Which two are you talking about, though?
It's hard to, it doesn't really show on here, it's kinda hard to see real soon. The two parcels are right next to us, and these are actually viewed in this one. That's a flag lot, and this, this one here's a little flag, too, that comes in, in the right hand corner. They just barely show up on the corner of the draw here, but they're only access to T-Bore lines and flags. And that, that kinda goes like you were talking about. It looks like it was gonna be expanded at some point, considering-
Yeah, I think that's, that was way back when, yeah.
If that thing gets re-subdivided, you could wind up with parcels that are white lots. They put out a detention, like, it shows a detention button on here, so denied on that access to the parcel. If they really did put up a railroad signing, I also, we got a parcel here that we just can't get to. It's all swimming and flood plain, but it's-
It might not be a bad idea to look at. I was, I see there's one single line, which, apparently a lot line there, so just down there is only about an eighth of inch.
It should be bigger.
To the, to the east. Um, if that road, T-Bore maybe was connected to there, I don't know if you can connect into that, just, just the stubs there. So maybe that would be another ingress, an egress for the project, too, I don't know.
Something to look at anyways. Yeah, we can take-
The, the land is- The, the land is open, I know that, that was the, original years ago, that was the intent to, you know, be able to possibly go through.
Okay.
So look at feasibility and what that would be.
No, it's a big site, but it does, it seems like it needs to be fenced out a little bit, a little more.
Persons around the contents, yeah. Yeah, we, next time we can, we can submit a more of an overall plan that shows more.
I don't know if that's, you said anything? Industrial use and industrial land?
If I live down County Line, I'm starting to find some other creatures and all that kind of.
Anything else? What else? What do you think?
No, I mean, that was, you know, the main thing was, we wanted to come in here and, you know, if you were like, heck no, don't do it, you know, or something like that, I mean, but, you know, just to make sure we're on the right path and there's no, no huge red flag or anything like that.
Maybe instead of going to Henrietta, we could get UPS over here.
Yeah, I mean, this, this project definitely has a, has a huge potential for, you know, to create some really good jobs, for sure.
You got a good location, you know, you got the express.
Yeah.
You know? Anything else? Anything you don't do with more?
No, I think I'm good.
You guys think about anything? What, just say anything?
Matt, Matt can help us out.
Show it off.
Matt Mcfield, Executive Director of the Webster Economic Development Alliance. As you may know or may not know, the WIDA, the Alliance, is a public-private partnership composed of the town, the village, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and then businesses within the village as well. So we are the single entity coordinating economic development on behalf of Webster, and one of my key roles is to coordinate with Greater Rochester Enterprise on a regular basis. They are our regional site selector for the nine-county Finger Lakes region. And on a regular basis, we submit the T-Bore Road component at a hundred acres for, when they have site selection calls for mega projects, and these are projects requesting sites of a hundred acres or more, seeking development of three, four, five hundred thousand square foot to a million square foot buildings. We are currently tracking seven projects that are in phases of request. We've had two site visits in the past twelve months for this site, and we've been getting solid feedback regarding the potential for this location. One of the main considerations has been timing to develop and timing to deliver the site in a, essentially a development-ready condition, which is what the process that Mr. Burrows is trying to at least get started currently. We've been working diligently with, with Mr. Burrows and with the town engineering and community development group. We are actively marketing this mega site within Webster. It's the only hundred acres of contiguous development in an industrial zone that's uncovered by existing buildings that we have available to us, and is one of the only three or four sites in the region that has highway access, a hundred acres, water, high power, and rail. So this is a very critical site for economic development in our community, and that's why I'm here on, on behalf of the Alliance in support of moving this project forward. Thank you.
Good job so far.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, you guys do some preparing and with preliminary drawings and stuff?
Yep.
Is it your next move now?
Yep, it'll take us a little bit, left and bear.
Well, you're out, get, get, get a direction anyways.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, we're good then. Thank you, thanks for coming in. All right, I think that's, we have one more thing here, this is, we have that letter from Lowe's. They're, they got their dates for when they want to put certain things out there, lawn boards and that. They keep the place neat and clean, keep it organized. They do have a lot of, whatever it is, fertilizer, I don't know, there's all that stuff that we've got under, you know, but, yeah, they asked for that a while back, we were doing that. That place, they, in the past, asked to put trailers, and I, I, my, my suggestion was it's not approved for that, and I don't think the town wants, you know, looking like a fuel mark and all sorts of paraphernalia out there. But anyways, they're asking for April 21st, May 25th, June 29th, and August 31st, and this is ritually done every year, requesting to give us a letter, what the dates are, they're proposing to do this, so we okay with this?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion that we grant them the suggested dates for their Spring Fest, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Laker Day. And all in favor?
Aye.
One other question. Do you ever, Country Max, the white, maybe, do that? The light at the night and morning, it's like, like...
Lighting?
Lighting.
It's kind of LED lighting.
Yeah.
It's, it's on until like ten o'clock and then...
Is that part of our...
Well, any lighting is always supposed to be downlit, so...
Definitely not downlit. It's not spotlighting, but it's like track lighting.
Yeah, the outlines of the building.
It outlines, it's like Christmas lights.
So it's kind of, can I build it?
Track lighting, no, dang it.
Well, there are things, one thing that they are doing, the one thing they are doing over at Country Max that I know was specifically said they can't do the approval, and all that mulch, it's all stored outside on the pallets, that's supposed to be back in that fenced area.
Yeah.
None of that stuff's supposed to be up out of the room, they said they wouldn't do it, got their approval opened up, the person they did was start everything up then.
Yeah, yeah, I see, there's a lot of stuff up there, we want to do. They probably get a price on the stuff or...
Well, they have a storage area for it, they just don't use it. They got just...
In the back part where that...
That fenced, that fenced in area, they, they said that was supposed to be for storage of that, so you didn't see it.
Yeah.
But they don't put it in there, they put garbage in there from leftover pallets and other...
They probably got so much stuff. What do you guys do, you want to do anything with it or?
Should send them a letter, remind them of their condition of approval for the site. With a copy, the condition of approval, and say, here, you agree to this, here's a copy of the letter.
Oh, and give them what was in the resolution, several copies, yeah.
Yeah, because Lowe's is doing it right, they out of the box, didn't do anything, basically.
What's that, oh?
Contravent.
Yeah. All right, good enough. All right, that's it. Thanks for coming in, I guess we're all done together. Thank you.